Hopefully, we've got our issues with present presenting the information figured out. We apologize for the delay. For many of you don't know, there was an incident on the highway that's kept Tucker Hodgson from arriving, one of our board members and Grant Hodgson from arriving at the location where Tucker was planning to present this from his office. So David Pendergast and I are in Tucker's office at in his conference room and will be presenting from here until they can arrive. The for two of our board members, as you heard earlier, Janie Olson has arrived virtually and is in the meeting. That's what we need to have for a for a quorum. Looks like Tucker's also in this meeting, so we'll have at least four, and I believe Grant Hodgson's in the same vehicle with him, so we probably have all of our board members. All board members on with the meeting. Again, we apologize for the delay. Doesn't seem like anyone's hearing me. Can somebody give me in the chat and let me know where audio is working for us? Give us a thumbs up?
Yeah, lots.
Not great. Well, as you know, there's been a lot going on. We're not going to belabor the entire history of the world today, but we wanted to bring you up to date. And we wanted you to know that there's been some good reasons why there's been very little communication. Multiple legal issues going on in the background. We've been working tirelessly. There's been a lot of work done by owners group. We could thank people all day long, but Kathy Coco has been amazing and is also on this meeting. Kathy chairs our our owner's advisory board. People like Kamal Metta, Deborah, I could go on all day with the what owners have done for us over during this time period, along with board members in trying to look at what our options were, presenting some some options and trying to rethink and look at every potential option, what the future, what the future of the resort might be and where we might end up. We'll go through these slides and hopefully that'll illuminate or bring everyone up to speed and then we'll be available for questions. And if we don't get questions, the answer today, we would appreciate if you put them in the chat and we will respond to them in two ways and we'll post answers to those questions and have Kathy post those answers by on the website and on our Facebook pages. And I think that'll also share to one of the owners' Facebook pages as well. Our recent timeline of events, we will again, we've told you we wouldn't start back at zero, but the resort closure is where we want to start. If you remember that we knew we had as we prepared for the special assessment and everything, we got initial payment from Capital Vacations and I think in the amount of around $108,000 that was due from them. And we had actually had conversations with Marop and believed they were going to continue with their paying the special assessment and continue on with this. And we were hit with a hammer when both groups indicated they were not going to complete follow through with their obligations. Once that happened, we moved to close the resort in order to conserve the little money that we had and move forward. One of the big problems for us is or one of the major issues for us as a board was looking at all the options and trying to have a plan in place to reopen the resort and trying to get good communication with Capital Vacations, which was very slow. Eventually, we were able to fight, we filed a lawsuit against Marop, Multi Resort Ownership Plan, which is a Utah corporation and began negotiations with them and at a settlement meeting with them, which is a pre-trial settlement meeting, as I understand it, on the 17th of October. Capital Vacations was there in their capacity as what a management company and their Marop has several board members on the board that are from Capital Vacations in whatever alliance they formed. And we learned that in that meeting, there was a potential that Capital Vacations and Marop would both come back into the fold and become full functioning with us as part of this settlement meeting. They couldn't make any commitments. We believe they were acting in good faith and working behind the scenes to see what they could do. They saw, I think we discussed the future of the mountain in that meeting, the fact the there's a lot of money being poured into the mountain. We went over for them, the timeline in that meeting. Capital Vacations claimed that their management, there shouldn't say that, their executive leadership didn't realize that they had been part of a plan to to do the Marop or Capital Vacations, both had been part of a plan to schedule the special assessment, all those pieces. We gave them quite a bit of information and that's when they let us know that they would see what they could do about coming back into the fold. That dragged on clear until meetings on 12/23 and 12/27, when they formally said, we're done. We're not going to be able to move forward. During that entire time and the entire time since eight one, we have worked to begin looking at what either of those potentialities were. How would we reopen it and what structure and form? And in event of a sale, what would we do? We're fortunate that Tucker Hodgson has 20 plus years in a title company and this is understands that we knew that the sale would be an issue of 1,632 weeks that needed title. But those were our, as we mentioned on in our update recently on the Facebook and on the website, that's those were our prior priorities at that point. We didn't know until 12/23, 12/27 of December. We had winterized all the units and made every unit in the in the complex turnkey. We did all, we found plumbing repairs, different things, but we had made those units turnkey and winterized them so that in the event of either option of sale or a reopening the resort, all we had to do was go in and turn furnaces on, flush water lines, reconnect water, water to those, which would be the course of one day and we would be able to turn those back on and be able to utilize the units. When we analyzed everything, eventually we determined and announced, as you saw and saw, if you follow the information we have, we announced that we were selling the resort. Apologize with the the slides, I can't quite see them on the computer that I have, so we're 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 going back and forth a little bit. Along with that, one of the big things for us was trying to maximize what we would be able to get for the owners in the way of a payment if we moved to a sale and we determined that we were going to sell. To that end, we also struggled with the expense of paying for the lawsuit against Marop. Eventually, we settled in that we have title now to all of the 318 weeks were deeded back to the association and we have released them from any issues as part of a settlement. Look, do do in large part to the fact that continuing the lawsuit would require funds that would potentially lead us to have to put out an assessment to the owners to bring money into continue operating and to fund the lawsuit. We were able to get those weeks recorded and cleared. That was done on the 15th, as you see there. That has a significant significant impact on all of the owners in clearing clearing that one hurdle. We're still negotiating with Capital Vacations over our over our contract with them for sales and marketing, so we won't be and on our management contract that we have notified them that we had closed out on as a on a month to month basis in November. And we also, if you can see on the screen now, you should see in the operational status, we had a flooding event in December, fully covered by the insurance. The amount of that loss is going to be in excess of $125,000 or $30,000 in total. Once we think, once we get there, to date, we have received a $30,000 payment from the insurance company and we're expecting another 70,000, $77,000 payment from the insurance company that we have utilized or placed into our bank accounts for eventual use in operating the resort and we have not undertaken the repairs. Again, wanting to pursue the sale and keep those funds available while we operate. I spoke to Capital Vacations slash VRI today and confirmed they have sent the $77,000 check to us and that we'll have it. The reason it goes to them is because we are part of a multi-resort insurance plan and they are the policyholder and it and it works down from them to each of the individual resorts that we we are with. The the essence of what we're saying is we've shut everything down and limited everything we can to try to minimize our monthly expense while we work out a potential path to a sale or again to a reopening, either either path would or saving money was the key to the key to the castle. Right now, our expenses, our expenses are power, heat in the community center, property insurance that that we had to pay that bill. If you're wondering what that was, $85,000 a year for insurance and we're glad that we we did so. Speaking to the loss that we had on the flooding, it was not a freeze up or anything like that. I know that the people speculating on on Facebook about that. The loss that we had was a faulty, we believe was a faulty installation of a repair that was done last year during ski season. I won't mention the company's name or not at odds with them. It could be a valve failure, but a valve separated and dumped about 23,000 gallons of water into the resort. Again, we received the partial insurance payment and our insurance company is pursuing financial compensation from the company that replaced that valve. So right now we have a massive resort. Doesn't look good inside inside the community center. However, all of the rooms themselves, every unit has been checked and rechecked and is ready to go. We are also, one of the expenses that we're facing is we still have to continue some minimal snow removal in order to keep access for fire equipment that we're required to and to keep hydrants clear. And right now we have an hourly person who's familiar with that, who happens to be Kathy Hillstead's son, who's a longtime heavy equipment operator, who's going to the resort and working as needed to clear snow and to keep things open at least to the level that will keep us safe with safe and provide access for any emergency equipment that we need to get in there.
You can hear that?
Sorry, yeah, David, David will monitor those questions and point them out. Someone's asking how much damage? Well, it was about four inches of water through the resort all throughout that went then ran downstairs. It went through the tennis court area and what you've seen then is all of our furnitures in in the interior of the clubhouse has some damage up about four or five inches high. And the sheet rock had to be removed from all the walls up a couple of feet where it soaked in all the way around most of the walls in there. The pool area also had had water damage where it flowed in there and around the walls where you have the the hard surface, I don't know, was the the white plastic hard surface that was there to protect the sheetrock. All of that's been pulled off and the walls have been opened. We did have another leak in there a couple of weeks ago. We had the power was off up there for about 20 hours, which essentially then shut the heat off and we had a pipe burst again. Luckily, that one filled the swimming pool and the expense on that looks like it will be under under $5,000, which is our deductible for our insurance company. That's already been repaired and our that again was our fire sprinkler system. One of the lines in the ceiling in the right above the pool. We didn't see any damage additionally to what we had. We haven't haven't found any at this point. And again, it appears most of that water went into the swimming pool, which had been drained. So we were fortunate there. And please keep posting your questions. Dave Fendergast is watching the computer and he'll alert me and we'll try to pause and answer them. When we're talking about the sale of the resort, we'd like to talk a little bit about our partner, Big D Construction, where we formed a corporation together and Big D was defrauded by the original resort, original company that was trying to build the condos out there as was as we were. Both of us had interests in the property. Rob Moore is the CEO or was the CEO, I believe now is one of his kids is taking the taking the reins for Big D Construction. And I can't speak highly enough of Rob. He would have been easy for him to just bypass us and take control of that property and he agreed to partner with us and to work forward to selling this. We contacted Rob in when we knew that we needed to expedite a sale of this and potentially being able to sell that property and fund the resort. He began working to get ready to sell it and begin preparing everything that he could do on his end to be ready to sell the resort and provide information about the previously planned condos and the potential that they showed and preparing documents for that and preparing to meet with any potential investors, noting that we'll have two have two separate sales, one for the Big Dig area to the north and one for Powder Ridge Village. Again, we undertook undertook that process early and we have had a good relationship with Rob. How that will work at the end of the day is however much money Rob has put into this will be returned to him, however much money we've put into it from paying for water and the water reservations for the 31 units, meaning there's a charge every month to hold the water in place for the for the 31 potential condos to be built on that property that we have been bearing some costs and we're sharing those costs. At the end of that, we'll divide the funds, repay each other for those things and any remaining funds will then be divided among between Big D Construction slash our new corporation and Powder Ridge Village Owners Association. Appraisals, the appraisals, we've had an appraisal done that was essentially a dirt appraisal and we've had a marketing strategy and completed and I get calls from people wanting to invest. I've spoken to, I don't know, at least a dozen groups of investors that have reached out during this process when we weren't for sale. We have at least a couple of non-disclosure agreements with investors. Others have simply asked that I we keep their information confidential and we expect that the resort will take between 18 to 36 months to complete, but we there is no real timeline at this point. We do have a sales strategy that we'll discuss again here shortly in this presentation.
Spanning on that.
The lawsuit against Marop, as I mentioned, them returning the weeks to us with no encumbrance, meaning we now own those 318 weeks and can sell them as part of the resort and return the money for that sale to be divided among all the owners. That's how we settled the lawsuit. We settled out of court and settled that that disagreement with Marop and all issues with Marop are settled at this point. Big Dig, the Big Dig Dig, so for people that didn't know or didn't understand, we're using that term. We didn't realize we've used it so much in our in our annual mailings and talking about that property. In this graphic, if you can see it on your screen, the property in yellow, which comes right up against our community center at the lower right corner of that yellow shape, that is the community center. And then you can see the Aspen Ridge buildings off to the left. And as you come lower to the bottom of the screen, you can see our other buildings and our and our driveways there. That is the piece of property that we has platted is platted for 30 condominiums with water that we had the plan to build that best description without labeling anybody is that somewhere in the group of developers who are doing that, some of them disappeared with the money and we were all left with a hole in the ground to have to mitigate. Again, property not yet listed for sale. We're not accepting offers yet. I've had people I had I've had people call me this week already again, wanting to be notified when it's for sale or when we have a have a an approach to the sale. We're working on that. But to today, this minute, we're not accepting offers. However, we do anticipate being able to accept offers within the next few weeks, if if not sooner. How much is my interval worth? That seems to be the question. The question that I get repeatedly from owners. We don't know. We've we've got some baseline figures that we can show you, but it doesn't really mean anything until someone shows up with a check for us and tries and we close the sale. What are the hurdles for us for for the sale? We'll go into that. One is we put a disclaimer in here, obviously to protect all of us as the as the group of owners from being sued by any of the other owners is that there's no guarantees here. This is this is how this is going to work. There's it's a sale and there's no guarantees of who will get what. We don't want you to think that, but we also wanted you to see what the numbers are looking like and how at least have some idea and be able to answer that question. So again, no promises. We don't know exactly what the numbers will be. There's, you know, this disclaimer, but we have some 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 abbreviated math for you to look at, meaning this is the taxable value of the of the resort as listed for 2024 by Weber County. When we look at those numbers and we come look and we put up some, when we says made up sales price of resort. If we were to sell it for 10 million and it costs 5 million to sell it, every owner would get 7,384. If we were able to sell it for 7,500, if every owner and it costs 5 million to sell, every owner would get 3,500 and so on and so on. If we sold it for 15 million, you can see the math, it's that simple, but no one knows what that number is going to be until we have a check. I can tell you, I literally had at least 100 phone calls from owners wanting to know what that number was.
Do there are lots of things?
Winter weeks will not be valued separate from summer weeks in this dispersal because that's how our original documents were created. That's still under investigation, but right now that's how it looks, meaning it isn't us, there's a board that will make that decision. It is the attorneys that will sit down and say, this is what it requires under Utah Condominium Act on how the funds are divided and on the base documents that created our homeowners association all those years ago. That'll be that'll be that algorithm will be returned by them, but right now we believe that it is going to be dispersed by owner. Meaning you, if you owned a winter week or summer week, you would get the same amount. And again, that's because of how the documents were created, not by any desire for that from the board members or any other owner. It will be done according to the law. That's that's it. There's no, we have no choice as a board and all of us have no choice as owners. We'll have to comply with those with those directives. And when we get that far, it'll certainly be published to you and for it to look at and have a chance to review it. So if we've missed something as a board or our attorneys have missed something, I know we have some very skilled and and we have at least several attorneys that I've spoken to their owners to look at and give input and as to what we might have missed and before any commitments are made. Does it, any more questions on that? We've got.
If you expand, I texted them 18 to 36. It seems like it happened 30 days with the reason.
Why is it the six, the, somebody's asking, explain why it's not going to be a 30 day sale and why it's going to be 18 months to than that estimate of timeframe? And it's because of the titles to our resort are 1,632 individual titles that are recorded titles that are out there for the resort and every one of those has property rights, just as just as you owning your home, this interval is owned and in Utah is a property rights state and it's very clearly defined in the condominium act. And so we have to have 1,632 clear titles before we could transfer title in a closing document to an entity and entity or a person that want to purchase it. That takes time. There are also numerous owners that we'll have to foreclose on or get pursue a quiet title action to get their to get their ownership of their intervals to include in the sale. I'm going to come back to that question again, because I think I'm going to answer a lot of your questions in just a moment as we talk about what that looks like.
Just hold on, the question's done.
I I just want to keep on that topic for a minute about why is it going to take so long? Because we're going to talk about the titles and how all that's going to look as we move farther on. And if you hold those questions for just a bit, I think they'll get answered as we move through here. Who is a current owner? We have a lot of owners that are worried because you saw our announcement that we changed the policy. We are, our policy remains that if you were paid, all of your dues were paid and these are two separate issues, your current on your dues, that means your dues were paid and your special assessment was paid. So any person that paid or any any business or person that paid the special assessment prior to December 15th, we committed when we first went down this path of having to use those funds to pursue operating while we tried to figure out what was going forth through the resort. We committed as a board and we voted as a board to return those funds first before any division of funds was done at in the event of a sale. Meaning if you paid that $700 when this resort gets sold and if you paid and were paid in in good faith in the special assessment before December 15th, that $700 will be returned to you before any funds are divided up. That's a commitment because those funds are not being used to refurbish the resort. They're being used to keep operating while we try to pursue this rather than going into bankruptcy mode or or something there. Or some some other mode of shutdown. But what we came upon was that now we have that special assessment where a group of owners has is current, they've paid it. Some of them have paid the full special assessment and whatever amount they paid, they will get back prior to any division of funds. That's me, I paid $700. I will get back my $700 when we sell this, every other owner in that boat. But where we came out is we have been spending a lot of money in attorney's fees trying to recoup that special assessment from those who haven't paid. That is Capital Vacations, Marop, others. It's very expensive and we don't feel as a board, there was any obligation at this point to refund those fees that we have to go out and pay money to collect to keep operating to owners that are forced to pay them by court actions or foreclosures in the future. So on December 15th, we voted that, okay, all the owners that have done everything they can in good faith to make that happen are going to be
reimbursed.
reimbursed prior to the priority division of funds once we sell us. So to back to your question, the 1,632 intervals, the questions are still popping on who's current, who's not. There's two levels of being totally current. One was your maintenance fees were paid. We have not billed maintenance fees in 2024 because we shut down and our goal was to not have to do that. We used money we had brought in from the special assessment to continue operating and we did not issue an assessment for to keep operating in for the year 2024 that would be our 2025 dues. We're doing everything we can to avoid it, including not repairing the sheetrock damage and water damage and using those funds to operate. And we'll have to market the resort with that damage and give a discount on the price for the repair or come to some arrangement with the potential buyer. But it allowed us to not have to make an assessment right now. We may have to in the future, but at this moment, we don't have to do that. So again, lots of questions. Every, I do have people that asking, what what's happening with people that owe balances? Well, the last line here, you should be aware, if you owe a balance to us, it is occurring, it is rising at a rate of 24% APR. And that that will continue right up until the sale is completed. Those funds, it, our current plan is that people who are in arrears, who haven't paid, those funds come out of anything that you might have potentially gotten in in the sale. Meaning if you owe us $8,000 in back dues and fees and the resort settles for 8,200, you would get 200, not 8,000. You would be returned to the other other owners who have been paid in full. There is an algorithm for that, I won't get into that, but it's divided again among the owners. Hopefully that answers a bunch of the questions that we're seeing in the chat and cost of sale. Somebody's asking, is the cost of sale 5 million? That's a made up number. We don't know. If you're asking what we actually guess that would be for the cost of the sale, it's all the title work that will have to be done and continuing to operate at 10 to 20,000 dollars a month to keep the doors open, pay the taxes, pay the power bill, you pay the water bill, all those, all those things that we're doing and even we've stopped paying taxes at this point. But we're estimating the best guess, a million dollars for the title work to get it all completed and cleaned up. That's just a guess, but somewhere in that amount is probably fairly accurate. And as we go through that process, you'll see us updating you. Here's, here's what we know about buyers. Here's what we know where we are. Here's what our costs are and it'll be transparent. The thing we did as a board that we opted not to do was we are handling this as a board and not hiring a company to do it. Because at the end of the hiring the company to do it, as they're finding out right now at Wolf Creek, who went through the same process, we're there now in unwind process. The unwind company ended up using all the money to do the unwind and there's very little or nothing going to be telling me when they talk to me is they don't think they're going to get anything. The reason we took it and didn't do that is because we wanted to get whatever we could for our owners. That's our role as the board is to protect the owners in every way we can. We wish we could have figured out how to protect the ski ski owners as a and continue to be able to have ski. But our fiduciary duty is to the ownership group as a whole. And that's again, based on some opinions. And that's again, based on a, so some opinions from our attorney as well. We'll keep moving through here and try to hurry this along a bit. When will you get that? This special assessment? You'll get your special assessment at the time of the sale resort, and again, that will come first. If we sell the resort and we, the, um, whatever amount that is, the special assessment dollars will come right off the top. That will be the first, first, um, and so if you're looking at five million dollars as cost of sale and you're wondering what we actually brought in on the special assessment, I don't remember the exact amount, but I believe it's somewhere between six and seven hundred thousand dollars that we brought into the resort that were currently used and have used essentially since July to operate. Um, to continue operating. Delinquent, delinquent again just means you haven't paid, didn't pay on time and you haven't done anything to correct it. This is where our expenses are coming in with how we go back now and have to foreclose to get titles, et cetera. Um, I, I think Tucker should be arriving here, hopefully in a few minutes, they've banned, Tucker is the expert in that. I apologize for him not being able to offer much of an opinion at this point, uh, in this presentation. Um, but I think this would be a moment where Tucker, if you could unmute and just speak to the costs of the title process and what the, what foreclosures might look like, it might be a good moment to do that. I'm not really sure that he can, but we'll give him a second here. Tucker could provide us some detail as real, to really answer some of the questions you're being asked. Um, the, when I spoke about how, why it would cost so much more for a sale, the, why a million dollars in title work or those kinds of things? There are a lot of title errors, there are a lot of people that will have to be foreclosed upon, that's not cheap, and there are a lot of owners that have passed away and the the title to that unit hasn't been passed to anyone and it has to be cleared and it has to be done so legally. And again, when you look at that, how many of those weeks are we talking about with title issues? Hundreds and hundreds of those that there's either title errors in or title problems, and I would guess that at least half of our weeks have some, some sort of error. The operational status of resort, again, we've, right now, we have sufficient operating funds to keep operating, but and our goal is to not be have to make an assessment of any kind. To speaking to that in the form of a sale, we're hoping that when we do reach, uh, some sort of agreement with the buyer and we come to that point, one of our goals will be to have them be willing to close the sale and apparently in speaking with the experts, um, that we've contacted, that's normal. That these take time to close out, but as part of that, that they would give us funding upfront to complete the, the, uh, processes, meaning title work and processes there as part of the sale with their final payment coming due at the closing point. In other words, we're hoping to pursue the sale in a way that makes it so we don't have to try to assess any of us as owners a dollar to be able to complete the sale process, that, that's a primary goal for us. We don't control that, but that's what we're working toward. Um, options for the owners, if your accountant is delinquent and you want to, and you want to deed back your week to us just because you're sick of this, great. But we're telling you, we think there's going to be something at the end of the sale and some value. But I've had owners try to personally give me their weeks. Uh, at least fifty weeks have been, David, Dave, can I just give you this? You've done, you've been working on the board for a long time, we appreciate what you've done, we're so tired of the phone calls we get from all the condo, um, condo people who are trying to get money to fix condo weeks, we're so tired of the, the fight, we don't use it anymore because we've aged out, those kinds of things, can I just give you my week? Well, no. Um, I can't accept them and I'm telling you, I think there's value in keeping them, however, if you want to deed them back, we'll accept them, but it will be that they're, you're, um, you're giving up some ownership rights in doing so. Now, we'll talk, Tucker will talk more about this in just a moment, he's just come in and he'll, he'll update you on that. But if your account's current and you want to deed back, it's a simple process and we can send you a form. What if you're delinquent and you'd like to become current? There are all of these different options that, that will come up and we'll, we'll try to address those for each owner in their particular scenario. And I, I'm still seeing comments or questions coming in that say, what about I have a prime week and you, it's not a prime week and there's different ownership? Again, it's not something we control, the delineation of how money is divided upon a sale is going to be determined by Utah law, the Utah condominium act and the legal documents are base documents that were used to create the condo association. Um, that, that's what will determine it, there won't be anybody on the board making a decision about that. It will be our attorney sitting down with us and saying, this is how it has to go. And, and what is appropriate.
Okay, thanks everyone. Hopefully you can hear me alright. We'll have Dave.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go, we had Dave mute his system so you can hear mine. Um, we'll try and get to this as quick as we can, Dave. Uh, I think you need to continue with the slides for me if you can, if that's alright. Okay, so I'm delinquent now, I'd like to become current. So as far as we are going with the, as, as the association, um, we are currently the management company. If you would like to become current, let us know, we'll, um, we'll let you know what the balance is. And to be honest, the safest way to give us money, uh, if you want to, is to, uh, send us a check. So we'll have a, that will be posted on Facebook, it'll be posted on the, um, on the website.
That, that address will be directly to the owner association.
Yeah, directly to us, Dave, I think they want you to mute your microphone, it sounds like. Thanks everyone, sorry about that. Um, so what, if, if you'd like to become current, here, here's what's going to happen, so to, to clear up the titles on these, uh, and this will be, this is just pretty much everybody. E- e- either way, when you deed us the property, because everyone will have to eventually, um, there'll be a couple of different types of agreements. One of them is if you're delinquent and you just don't want to pay anything else, we'll send you a hold harmless that says, hey, the association will forgive your debt in, in return for your deed and then you'll, you'll be off the hook. Okay, if you are delinquent right now, if you haven't paid your special assessment or your dues and you, and you come up with that money, then, uh, you'll be, you'll be considered current just like everyone else will. Um, we can provide, we can provide your current balance or who are, who's overpaid, we're working with capital vacation still to get those exact numbers. Um, so we, we just want to be accurate for everyone, so, uh, we're, we're hoping to, to not delay, delay any of that. Um, and I'm going to flip around so I can see Dave's screen a little bit. So bear with me here.
We're starting to look like we moved those over here.
Well, they are, we're the three minutes on sudden. Oh, wonderful, okay. So I'd like to, I'd like to go up a couple if we can. Thank you, sir. Okay. Um,
Again, we apologize, the technical difficulty we've had and trying to rush now because we're behind. It's, can't control the, uh.
Can't control the traffic, there was a huge, huge traffic accident on, uh, Legacy Highway today. Shut down that highway when we just got on it, uh, for about an hour and a half. Okay, um, so just going back through these numbers, just, just a little bit and then, um, for those owners, uh, well, sorry, I'm a little scattered. Um, one, the funds are made available for your current and your current, you will be reimbursed, just like Dave has talked about. Uh, we're going to send you a deed to sign and then something like, it, it's called a deed for equity agreement where you give us a deed and we promise to pay you from the funds of the sale. So all these are legal documents that our attorneys are going to be, be preparing for us. Um, that's one of those things that you'll see. Um, just a little bit about me, I've been at Backman Title for twenty five years, um, I began my career um, actually as a document recorder for Backman Title, preparing documents, improving documents at the Weber County Recorder's Office, so, um, I don't want to say that I was born to do this, but in a lot of ways, it, it kind of worked that way. So the HOA currently owns around six hundred and sixty intervals, we have around seven hundred owners and we've got about three hundred that were in arrears prior to the issuance of the special assessment. We need deeds from every owner or foreclosures from every owner to consolidate the ownership into the HOA's name so that we can sell it. Um, as I've been doing the title work on this, it's kind of been on a volunteer basis right now because the HOA, because we as owners, we don't have money to pay for this work yet. Um, eventually when the property sells or, um, we, we have some funds come in from someone else, there'll, there'll be bills for that and that'll come off the top of it again. Uh, for our sixteen hundred some odd intervals, as we go through this, there's been over four thousand deeds recorded at the county transferring those and it takes a little while to go through them. There's also a picture on the screen there of the physical files, the filing cabinets that were at the resort. Now you'll notice on some of these file folders that there are, uh, pages sticking up and those are pages that were either not recorded at the county or recorded incorrectly at the county. And those things all need to be resolved prior to the sale, okay? Um, most intervals that we have, over half of them have some sort of title issue as I'm going through these and, and most of them are pretty minor, like, uh, a missed, like the notary acknowledgement wasn't filled out right, or a middle initial was, was missed on a past deed or something like that. Or, yeah, just a whole bunch of stuff like that, but all those are, um, all those things need to be fixed one way or another and some of them will be able to go back to old owners and get deeds signed or affidavits signed, but a, a lot of this, we're going to have to go to petition the court. Okay, so if we can't get a corrective deed or do an affidavit to correct these errors, the court is our, is our main recourse. So this is the advice that we've received from people in the title industry and people, um, uh, and the attorneys that we've talked to is it's probably going to take one massive high title action for the entirety of the resort prior to the sale, that's one of these things that'll take on that, that eighteen to thirty six months because we're on the court's calendar, not our own. And the individual owners will be co-plaintiffs with us as an association. The goal of the association is to have your title cleared up for you so that that line of money goes directly to you and not to a prior owner or someone who might, might try to say that they have a claim on the title. So for everyone who sticks with us, um, would there'll be another document, there'll be the deed for equity agreement, there'll be the actual quick claim deed to the resort. And for several of you, there'll be an affidavit of beneficial interest and plea to the court stating, I'm the owner, I've been the owner for this long, uh, how, here's how long, all right, here's the, the chain of title. Here's the problems noted on the chain of title, we're asking the court to put the title into our name, to quiet the title into our name. You'll sign that document and the board will sign that document or our attorney will sign that document, so everything is together. So you can imagine with, um, sixteen hundred some odd units, there's going to be that many affidavits likely that will need to be filled out and four thousand deeds put in the correct order for the court to be able to interpret, it's, it's going to take a little bit. Um, the title and, and curative work is ongoing, I'm spending, it, it's been hundreds of hours so far, um, again, for me, uh, if you don't know this, I've, haven't been on the board very long, but I've been an owner since I think nineteen ninety seven or nineteen ninety eight. Uh, I think I was twenty two years old. My parents owned weeks, my brother's own weeks, my nieces and nephews own weeks, for me, this is, um, this is a labor of love for them. Um, we had a question, if I need to update the title to, to a divorce, can we do that now? Yes, we can, we can figure things like that out. There's another slide on here that says, you know, I own this with my husband or my wife and they passed away, how do we fix that? Or this was my parents' week and they have both passed away, how do we fix that? These are all things that we're going to have to deal with and there are solutions to these problems as we, as we go along, but you can kind of get a sense of how complicated things are. Uh, that, that's basically for the title, I did want to go through privacy and fraud before we turn the time back over to Dave. Uh, people know now that the resort is going to be for sale and the fact that you are an owner is a public record because your deed is recorded at the county. Right? Um, you need to be very careful about who you're communicating with and sharing your personal or financial information. As a board, we're not asking for your, for your payment on, online through Zelle or through Venmo or through Western Union or any, any of those other items. You will know the exact way to pay for the resort. Okay, um, we had a question about why can't we use the sale of the big dig to fund the resort? Um, I, I think we'll, we'll have Dave answer that question a month, let, i- in just a few minutes, um, but that's, that's another of those questions that we're looking at. We're going to verify or make sure we have verified accounts and information in talking with you, one of the things that's coming up is a contact form, we have the, uh, form from Capital Vacations and V R I about how they have been contacting you. Several of you have new phones, new phone numbers and new email addresses, we're, we're going to ask that you do, that you do those, uh, that you fill out this form. We want to make sure the communication is going through the same, to the same way. Uh, Dave, do you want to talk about the big dig before we go through the other owner questions here real fast or should we keep going?
Yeah, I think we're just going to have Dave, kind of gas, read all the questions and we can respond as a group now, we've got your, got the equipment we originally intended to use.
Yeah, that's great.
To, to do this meeting. David, you want to read through the questions and we'll ask, answer them.
Absolutely, so the first question that we just asked is, could the sale of the big dig allow the resort to open back up?
Essentially, what we've learned from every person we've talked to is that no one wants to buy that mountain in the form of a resort without owning both pieces together. And that from the, even from the, from the people, the investors that we've talked to, they want it all or nothing. And similarly, the marketing analysis that we've had done and the people we've talked to on the real estate side, um, they think it's worth much more together for all of us, for the owners than separately. Um, so essentially the answer to the question is no, the best result for all the owners is to sell them both, sell them together and try to keep that as a package. Um, just so that, to clarify on that, when we initially went into this, we attempted to reach out to anyone to see if they would buy the big dig quickly. And like, obviously I can't tell you who has reached out to you because they've asked not, not to do so. And we got that message immediately back, we, it's either all or none, we'd get the whole mountain and that resort property as a whole, or we don't get the resort property. Um, and that, that's just been the consistent message.
So here's the next question, so once the sales are final, will you pay the long-term owners? We own since nineteen ninety four.
Say that again, Dave, sorry, I got distracted.
That's alright, uh, I saw the squirrel too. So once the sales are final, will you pay the long-term owners? We own since nineteen ninety four.
Everyone will be paid the same because we're all equal owners in the resort. So depending on, if you own one week, then you'll get a one week portion, if you own two weeks, then you'll get a two week portion, that, that's again, what, how our governing documents read.
And then this next question is going to be along the same line, will a larger unit be compensated? And again, it goes back to the, the governing documents, how we do that.
Right, I think I'll, I'll hit that one more time and it is again, we, we see that same question of a prime week is simply to go out and sell it on the market would be worth more than, than the, the other weeks when we were open and, and working and working on that side, however, in our governing documents, they, it doesn't read that way, it reads as though they're all equal, equally divided ownership of resort by interval. Not by size, not by, not by market value, not by any of those things. And frankly, um, on the other side of that, as we've looked at it, it's probably not going to be allowed, again, that's still, the attorneys will make that final decision. The investors and people who are looking at to pay for it are looking at it the same way, it's just of, of our available property, it's X. And it's by square, could be derived by square footage or other measures, but it's just a total for the entire resort that they want to look at. So another question that came up that's on the list on here a couple of times is, could we just sell a couple of buildings and keep a couple of buildings? It injures everybody if we do that. Meaning all of the owners take a hit to try to keep, to divide the resort for the same reason that we just spoke about. No one wants to buy it if they can't get the whole thing. The value of what we have to sell diminishes greatly just by trying to divide or pull one building out. Um, it's ultimately why we decided to go with the sale.
I wanted to bring up one other thing because this came up. This came up on the chat, um, is it really going to cost five million dollars to complete the sale? I don't think so, we don't know what the closing costs are going to be on that back of the napkin, napkin math. I put that in there as an outrageous top end number that I don't think we'll ever reach, but we, we honestly don't know. We don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you heard Tucker, I did share that a guesstimate of what, a reality based guesstimate
Great.
would be a million for ti- just for title work.
Yeah, that's, that sounds about right.
Doesn't encompass any of the other, doesn't encompass when you talk about that five million again, or a number of what it will cost before we divide the owners. So you take that million, then you take another seven hundred thousand in what we, um, what we will need to pay back for special assessments that will go back out. So you're one point seven there and then potentially we have other dues that we have to collect to, to keep operating, to keep the doors open.
And, and like Dave mentioned earlier, we have not paid the property taxes for two thousand and twenty. And and like Dave mentioned earlier, we have not paid the property taxes for twenty twenty four. In Utah, for those of you that are worried, you have five years to pay your property taxes before it becomes an issue. Uh, we're not gonna get that far. And that's another hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four, if we continue to not pay the taxes for this year. That will probably double, so the closing costs continue to go up as we move. The other, the other uh, question that we had is was the current debt of the resort or another one? We have no debt right now.
We have some unpaid bills in the amount of uh. One contract for our internet that we had up there is a long term contract. And they're currently pushing us to pay the face value of the contract at thirty eight thousand dollars. Other than that, we are current on our bills and we have zero debt. Uh, other than again, the normal monthly bills that we are current on.
Okay, we had we had another one, another one about the contact information. Um, I put that up on the screen now, that'll also come up on our Facebook page and our website, it's just a Google form to fill out how we can get ahold of you. Um, and only board members have that have that for us, go ahead.
Alright, so the next question is the prime, the red prime weeks cost more, so they should be worth more.
Well, I think that's a valid argument, but again, it will be governed by the by the Utah condominium act. And by our governing documents, the way they were created. In other words, we can't go in and change that at this point. We don't have a way, we we're governed by those two things, and that's what will ultimately determine how it's divided. And if it's determined that. A red week gets more or a summer week gets more, it will be according to the law and according to that document. What we've initially been told by our attorney is that is not how it's going to go and it's going to be divided equally by interval. However. Rather than spending money on attorney's fees to determine that when we didn't even know we're even sell it. That was a quick reading of the document. And a quick opinion from the attorney. Again, trying to conserve money because we didn't need the answer to that if we we opened the resort. Well now, it was as we get further in this process, we will get it definitive. And we again, like I said earlier, we'll publish it, so anybody that has input with that or thinks that we're making an error there and our attorney has made an error. We'll have a chance to look at that and and address it because that's an important question to every one of us.
Uh, one thing I wanted to mention also, I'll move microphone over here maybe a little so you can hear me. Keep in mind that the current board did not write our rules. We didn't create the C C N R's, we didn't, we didn't do any of this, we're trying to abide by the rules that were set long before each of us were members of the board. So that's that's just another another thing to keep in mind, we didn't write the rules, but we, as a board, we have a responsibility to abide by them.
Cool, the next one is the amount of the sale will be dispersed plus the special assessment refunded question.
Correct. At the end of the day, the number of owners we have. They're current at that point and that actually have ownership interest in the resort. Will be that number, right now is seven hundred and eight, if we got seven hundred and eight thousand dollars, everybody get a thousand dollars. If that makes sense to you, it's equal division is what we think it's going to be. Now that formula that, that question relates again to the same thing, it'll ultimately. There's still some question that will have to be answered by the attorneys, but that's how we think it's going to occur.
Will you share this deck after call?
Uh, copy the slides, uh, at least portions of it will be shared, yeah, yeah, we can put that on the Facebook page and on the website.
Senior is not sure.
Yeah.
Could there be a blended situation or solution where part is sold, but one or more buildings held out of the sale and that was already answered recently? Uh, this next one was skipped sixteen and seventeen.
On our slides.
On the slide, so we can go back to.
We can do that. To see what we missed there. Um, Marop. Marop owned about nineteen percent of our intervals, you can see why it was so important to get those. The settlement, we think the settlement value per owner may have increased for every owner by twenty five plus percent. Um, based on. Based on the number of owners.
The fewer owners that we have, this is the way to look at it, the bigger piece of pie everyone else gets. So when we took title to Marop's owners or Marop's intervals or weeks. Um, that gave everybody about a twenty five or thirty percent raise, i- is how that worked. So slide seventeen kind of goes over, and again, these numbers are just. Not accurate or whatever, but with the same cost of sale and the same sales prices, if we had had to deal with Marop as an owner. You can see what effect that would have on these fictitious sales price with fictitious. Uh, numbers of owner.
So that's a comparison, if you're looking at that screen, the top numbers are what you would get. Without Marop and the bottom numbers, what you've gotten if we hadn't been able to settle with Marop. So it should be, should be fairly explanatory there, so we'll get back where we started out back.
Next question, I looked at the website and it doesn't reflect the fourteen hundred we paid. How do we assure that we have been credited for that amount?
We're working on that right now, in fact, I've spent a whole bunch of time the last ten days trying to get that clarified and start to get the documents from. V R I, as you again, we enter our management contract, but because it was costing us eleven thousand. I think it's eleven thousand seven hundred dollars per month to have. V R I continue to be our management company. And in twenty twenty three in August, we voted not to renew that contract and to go on a month to month as a board. Um, that's one of the issues we're dealing with is that. Apparently vacation V R I slash capital, capital vacations. Just feeds that, they still think it was a contract in those, we say no, we run on a month to month and we ended that to save money. But what we're doing now is we've transferred all the finances are in our hands, all of our money is in our hands. I've been doing all of the accounts receivable and accounts payable and we review all that and vote on it as a board. Um, throwing checks that I write, it's not a single person seeing seeing an invoice and paying it, every 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 dollar that goes out is approved by the board. Um, there are some specific rules for how we how we spend money, but we're extremely frugal. Um, we're paying snowplow and that kind of things, but. To to the longer end of that question is. Again, at the end of the day, when we divide it, when everything is divided out, those are the costs that we're gonna save.
So again, uh, next question, so if I paid the full amount of twenty eight hundred, do I get it all back?
Absolutely, that's what one thing we've committed, if we get money in the sale, you get that twenty eight hundred before any owner gets a dollar. I I didn't pay twenty eight hundred, I paid seven hundred and I want my seven hundred dollars back too. If you paid some of some, I think I might have paid it twice, I might have paid fourteen hundred. Let's come back and talk about where the bat account balances, I'm sorry, I kind of got distracted here, but. We're, at this point, we're trying to get the detailed accounts for every. Um, for every owner in our hands now, well, V R I's hands. And we spoke today about transferring that and how we're going to transfer that and interpret it. Um, at that point, we will be able to, we'll be set up so we can take payments. So we can accept and well, you'll have instructions on the web and on Facebook on how to make payments or how to how to look at your accounts or how to review them with us. And as part of that um, process. Meaning as we go through the title work and both each others with with each owners, our intent is to make, try to make the. Account information on your account completely transparent to you, meaning here's where you can go and look at it. We don't want to do that in bulk because your private information is yours and. But we're trying to figure out as we go through this process, how we can either email that to you, hence. Updates your owner information so we can send you a copy of what we show for your own account, so if you have a dispute, we can try and resolve it. Um, but that's why it's so important to get your information. Is all the finalizing will go, and yes, that includes us, um. In. Calculating the accrued interest on each account each month, so there's some work being done in the background, um, by board members, by Kathy. And we're going to need a lot of volunteers to go through all of this paperwork that's being done. Meaning all the forms that you'll need to sign as we and work through and have notarized to as we work through each owner's individual situation. And clearing up the titles so that we can get through. Um, someone's asking if we're still collecting on the assessments, no. There are no further assessments planned right now. We're not collecting on the special assessment, any because the funding is we're not assessing you for something we're not doing. Now, we're fortunate that we did have a special assessment because it's the money that we're living on right now to get the sale completed and to stay alive. Until we get to that point. If at some point we run completely out of money and can't pay the monthly bills, the power, the water, et cetera. There'll be an assessment, but we're doing everything we can to bring that.
Uh, the next uh, is good call on the outstanding special assessment. The next question is, oh, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, keep going.
So even in best case scenario, eighteen months, doesn't appear we'll have enough operating funds to continue that long. What does your crystal ball indicate for the next special assessment? Or will it be monthly special assessment until sold? And then the next comment with that is, uh, I'm sure the board has considered this. If the resort is going to be leveled, but obviously no real reason to put any money, put in any money. And to make the resort look good or even maintain the recreation center.
So our plan again is to, in the pursuit of the sale, is to get enough upfront money from the buyer. To fund all of our costs until the sale is completed. That's our goal, we don't know whether that will happen or not, but that's the plan.
Yeah, you do want to add?
Yeah, there there's a couple of questions on there about the different numbers used in. Like is there sixteen hundred weeks, sixteen hundred thirty, sixteen sixty four? Um, when the condominium was originally platted, there were thirty two units times fifty two weeks, that's sixteen hundred sixty four. When the condominium was replanted, um, the those numbers went down to sixteen thirty two, that's the number that Dave's been we that. Been using because they had one week for every unit as a maintenance week. Um, well. There are thirty two units kind of outstanding from that time that we're working on, that's part of the title issues. Um, as far as owners who are current right now, those those numbers, uh, we're trying to get those finally from Capital Vacations, but these are all kind of round numbers. Um, that we're going through and we we don't have the exact amount yet.
The one number that you see there, a thousand twenty six owners or intervals that would be paid, that was the number prior to Marop. Deeding their weeks back. That's why that number was significantly wanted to say, that three hundred and eighteen weeks, if you add that to the seven hundred and eight. That's the thousand twenty six, so hopefully that starts to make sense, and then the total number of weeks being sixteen hundred and thirty two.
So next question, three bedroom versus two bedrooms versus one bedroom should be valued appropriately, not the same. Multiple bedrooms paid more for their weeks and higher maintenance costs, and that goes back to. Whatever the, our agreement says is that's what it's gonna be.
Frankly, that makes sense to everybody, but we're still gonna be bound by the law. I I think that what you just expressed may be completely more, maybe more fair. I think every owner might have a different opinion on it, but again, it'll have to be done with the. At the. Following Utah law.
If we're making monthly payments and we made payments until twelve twenty twenty four, how do we find out whether we are current or overpaid? Who can give that balance info to us?
That's a good question.
That's what we're working, that's what we're just discussing, we're trying to get those accounts in our hands. So that we can review every one of them and know exactly where we are. And be able to answer your question individually when you email us and say, where am I in my account, I've been paying monthly.
I I think the bottom line is if you've been paying monthly to Capital Vacations. And your full balance wasn't paid, we're not going to assess you on the deficiency at twenty four percent, that wouldn't be fair. Until we can get our our stuff, so I I think that, I think most of the board would agree on that, we haven't talked about it, but that's.
Actually, we did, we 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 did say that there's owners that are on those plans, that was part of our notion, so.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, so if you're on monthly payment, find your cover.
Yeah, you're gonna be okay.
And our goal is to be able to answer that question in detail for you individually when you say. Where am I and what what's my current status to be able to email you back, here's a list of what we have, here's what you owe. And here's payments that are due or the time timeframe that payments were due. Uh, but currently, again, there's no assessment for, the special assessment is not being billed or assessed. If you were current. When we shut down or you've become current before December fifteenth, you are current. And we'll get that refund.
We we have a bunch of questions about what is this Facebook page and what is the webpage? We'll put out a communication to each of you, uh, especially as you use the contact form. Uh, about where those things are, we've been communicating with both of those things, and again, our ownership committee is, um. Owner committee has been helping a lot with that, especially Kathy Coco.
Uh.
It's most special.
See. This is not obvious by looking satellites, certainly not commissioned. Yeah, well, we'll have to, we'll have to get with you afterward and and. Um, and I'm not sure how to answer your question that you had at five fifteen, it's been twenty minutes too, so you might not even remember it.
The, uh, that's an interesting question though, is the boards look are ultimately our role. Is to concede the continuation of the resort. The conclusion that we came to, as as difficult as that is, is. It could not continue as it was, and then it became, what is the path? We came to the conclusion then that trying to either break up the resort, try to open it for skis, skiing, we believe we looked at all that. That those were not financially viable options to pursue. Then, as we were working through that process, we have. The potential that Marop and Capital Vacations would honor their obligations. That would be a completely different playing field and we were prepared, meaning all the rooms are ready, everything's. Ready to turn the turn the power on, turn the gas on in the in the furnaces and reopen. When that didn't come through, that's where we came to the final decision, we are selling. We could not make it work. If we couldn't continue the resort, then our next duty is fiduciary to every owner. And that's the change, and Kamal makes a great point. How do we make this work for the resort? That was why we had all of Kamal and his group give did a ton of work and.
Thank you.
Kamal and Deborah, I mean, I spoke to them many, many times, and then they were working with, I was pretty overwhelmed with calls, meaning. Dozens per day of calls and from owners for multiple months. Um. And that group worked in the background and came up with options. As we evaluated all those things and ultimately had to make a decision. After having all the information that we had reported, it was unanimous vote. That we have to sell. At the at the end of the day.
We have a couple of questions coming in, Dave, I'm gonna jump in if that's alright, um. Are we to continue paying maintenance fees then? Right now, we're not asking for any ma- any maintenance fees. That's 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 where we're at, we're trying to fund the sale and the continuing operation of the resort. Without asking owners for any more money, that's that's our goal, because we are, we're owners too, right, everybody on this board is. Uh, and we don't want to pay more money either, i- unless it's absolutely necessary. We're we're not going to ask for any more money. So you you didn't see a bill come in in October like you usually do for the twenty twenty five main uh. Maintenance fee, and and you probably won't see that. If if we do end up having to assess folks for more money, you you will let you know, we'll have an order of town hall like this. And we'll go over the costs and expenses of the resort and everyone will know what exactly is going on.
To your point about town halls, Dr. We've been discussing this and we'll. As we go through this process, we'll try to have an open board meeting on Zoom at least quarterly, so you know where we are. What what's come, uh, what's come up in that ninety days where we are and what's what are our next steps on?
There's a question back here, if we're going to um, make the Zoom available to watch again. Uh, and while while before Dave answered that, thank you for all of your appreciation for us. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank yous.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Dave.
I think, uh, yeah, I think this meeting's an open meeting, it's recorded, anybody who wants to listen to us ramble can can do so. We apologize for that, it was a little, uh, we we all had parts to play in this meeting and it kind of came apart. Are there any NDAs still in effect with potential buyers? Yes. Um, I think we're at the point where we need to move into the. Into our owner questions piece, but there are a few more things we'd like to, a few more pieces of information that we would like to to share. Um, meaning. Where are we going? How are we pursuing the sale? Well, obviously, Rob Moore is a big piece of that. Have we signed a uh, an agreement with anyone to represent us for the sale? No. Have we come up with some costs, incurred some costs recently in that process with getting market analysis? Yes. Um, we've paid for an appraisal, and we're not making public. And essentially that was appraisal of the dirt, of what the dirt was worth without our buildings on it. And a market analysis of what the resort is 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 worth to a potential buyer, selling it as a resort. And then hopefully selling it in conjunction with the big dig. Um, at the same time, we shared the costs. For an appraisal of the big dig, which must be sold separately or accounted for separately. Um, be- because of the ownership issues you talked about, the weeks and the and how are they valued and how is that money divided? Um, so those two, those two things, the appraisals are completed, and what what's our next step? Where are we going? Well, early on in this process, we started out reaching out to several different people for advice, we, I mean, we spoke to. Uh, for instance, Jamie Lithgow, I think she's on, I think she's.
She's on this call, yeah.
On this call, who's gone through this process with another resort just down the road from us. And what their sales price was per unit, what they got, she's, Jamie's helped us with a lot of information and she's up at the resort quite often and. Is watching the place for us and has just been a great asset for us. Um, and it it ran the gambit, we've talked, we've talked to real estate professionals. We came upon a real estate professional who lives in Utah, who sells resorts nationally that. We came upon a real estate professional who lives in Utah, who sells resorts nationally. That's what he does. He gave us time, came to the resort, looked at it, charged us nothing. As that was early on, as we started down the, down the path of wondering what we would do, didn't know if we'd reopen. And we told him that we can't sign an agreement with you. We just want some advice. We felt like we needed to be prepared to sell or prepared to reopen. Wherever the path led us, we needed to work on both simultaneously and be agile enough to respond when, when we knew what the circumstances were gonna. Where they were gonna drive us. Well, that particular, that particular company or that particular representative didn't ask for any money, didn't require any money, didn't ask us to sign any agreements during those things. We've reached out to him multiple times and in the last.
Including today.
Yeah, including today. And in the last couple of months, we have, um, incurred some expense with him for preparing documents and things to get us ready for. Um, reaching out to investors and there is a high likelihood that we will utilize him in some capacity in.
Marketing.
In marketing the resort. It's what he does. It's what he's done. He has a history. We vetted him with, with others, that kind of thing. We also in that process still have to collaborate with Rob Moore and his desires on how that will be sold. We have had multiple investors reach out to us early in this process that we have committed to, to sitting down with, uh, as this goes forward. And we will be doing so, you know? Um, right now, we probably will engage. This person, uh, I don't want to name him right now because there, there's no agreement in place or anything. And we have not made any commitment to him. But we'll probably go that direction just because of his willingness to help us when we have nothing and didn't dare pay anybody for anything. And, uh, his willingness to say, I'm not the right guy for that when we ask questions and, and. And you probably want to hire someone else for that piece of things as we look at things. We, we've come to like what he's, what he's offering and find him to be a very, uh. The advice he's given us was fairly compelling and find him as a competent avenue to sell property. The reason that I mentioned that at the end here is because we haven't committed to anybody. And we have done our due diligence. And to some degree, you have Tucker Hodgson here that deals in property, sales and, and is familiar with the market in Utah. For these types of things because that's what he does for a living. And we have, so we do have some access to, to the players. None of us had a formal relationship with this person. None of us, there's no, um, conflict of interest with anybody on the board with this guy. Um, it was a name that, uh, we were able to pull out and get, uh, make a contact. None of us ever, I don't think spoken to him before we.
No, we hadn't. It was recommended to us by two different real estate attorneys who's been advising the resort again. One of them for free and one of them was our attorney, recommended also by the independent appraiser who we, who we contracted with. Uh, multiple people said, this is the person you need to talk to if you're selling a, a resort in Utah or anywhere. Um, just, just thought I'd throw that in.
But let me, let me also say, the reason we haven't committed to anyone. Is because we felt like we owed it to, owed it to the owners to have input right now. We need to do this quickly and make a decision. But we're still at the point where if you've got other ideas or things, we, we think we're on the right path. But this gives you the opportunity to email us, call us, call me. I've, I take everybody's calls fast as I can. I, I've currently, I have zero callbacks due to anyone. I just wanna.
First time in a month.
I went months with a list of, of, uh, of calling people. And I met some amazing people. Again, uh. Two of the, two of the ones that stick out from me were Kamal and Deborah that, um, and, and, and there were, there were dozens. I wish I could remember every name and recall them and announce that here, but, uh, they're truly just. Working for all the owners and trying to find, and of course Kathy Coco. But we haven't made a commitment wanting to have you have the opportunity to give us feedback on this meeting. That's really, we are, we believe we're on the right path. We consulted all the professionals, but we are an owner-driven organization. You, you elected us and everything we do as a board is driven by trying to do the best for the owners. And to Kamal's point in his conversation on, with Adam Fleming on the, on the resort. The direction changed when we, from how do we continue the resort when we determined we didn't think we could. To how do we then get the most benefit for the owners?
Uh, I'd like, there's been a couple of questions from folks about what do I do if I need a deed? Um. Most of, well, several of the problems, uh, with our titles have come from people doing it themselves and. Uh, for a car title and things that works great. When you're dealing with land title, especially that these are deed of weeks. Things need to be exact. If you need help with the deed, or if you have a situation where again, mom or dad has passed away or husband or wife. Um, let me know and we'll walk you through exactly how to do it. I, we can help as a, as a board. Come up with those, with those solutions, deeds and affidavits and things like that as far as successor trustees or through probate. That's, that's what we do. That's what I do.
So to that end, this is where we're going to ask for owners to help us and Kathy Coco will be. Organizing a team to help us contact owners, help us share the correct forms, help us prepare files for every owner. And get these documents for whoever wants to be them back. Um, that, we've tried this before. In fact, we were successful with some deep backs from owners. A couple of times we've tried the same program. You're way behind. I don't think you can ever catch up. Would you just give us a week back so we can sell it to someone who's current? You know, keep, help us keep the resort. We were able to get about thirty weeks over the multiple, multiple times we tried that, we were able to get about thirty intervals back and current. Um. Paul's got a comment in here is, did Capital Vacations actually take title to the units that were committed to them? Um, no, and if not, is it encumbered by a contract? There you get the argument right on the head, Paul. They had a contract to take the weeks. They also had a con, there was a sales agreement with them through, through one of their subsidiary corporations. And at the same time, they had a management contract with us. To complete the paperwork to provide the weeks to that company. We didn't fulfill either one. And then send us a letter saying they weren't gonna continue with us in taking those weeks that we committed to, to take ownership of. That's the dispute. That's where we are in the negotiation with them right now. Um, I'm not gonna go into more detail, Paul. That was very, very, uh, good. Um, assessment of what, what Capital Vacations. We're disputing that contract and no, they never took title of them and they are demanding that title. And we're saying, why would we give that to you when you didn't pay your special assessment? With all of those kinds of arguments, meaning they are behind twenty-eight hundred dollars for every one of the hundred weeks that they would like to have title to. We'd like to have that twenty-eight hundred dollars before we give the title to them, if, if that, if they're gonna continue in the contract. But it's a mess and that's where we're in negotiations with their CEO of Capital Vacations. And hopefully having another meeting with them in the very near, and I hope it will be this week. I haven't seen anything and I'll be reaching out to them again. To set a meeting to find out where we are. Um, we won't go into our strategy. We do have a strategy and we have some, some leverage to use in that. That's probably the best, the farthest I want to go with discussing that, but.
I think you're right, yeah.
There is some leverage in the, in that argument. So to further elaborate on that, we don't want to expend a whole bunch of legal. Um, a bunch of money for legal bills to, to, uh, complete that process. We're trying to avoid a lawsuit or lengthy legal process with them. And come to some resolution. The reason we haven't already filed a lawsuit with them and it's, again, it's expensive and we're playing the, the monies that we have in the bank. To be able to continue to operate rather than having to assess. That doesn't mean we're gonna give away the farm. If it comes down to it and it's time to fight, we're gonna fight. We're gonna come back to you and say, here's where we are and, and we, and we're going to fight. We're, we're not, we're, we're weighing those, um, pros and cons back and forth as, as it develops.
Should, should owners get interest on their assessments?
That they paid.
That's something we haven't considered.
Haven't, haven't considered, but simply put, no. We're not gonna do it. That's my, my personal opinion. I don't know how we do it. We'd have to vote on this board. But I think that that question is something that we're gonna have to explore and have a formal vote as a board. For first blush, when you say that, I'm, no, I, I don't think so. And, and I'm one that's paid it, so. That, but that's just how I see it. It just makes a, a more complex problem. But to that, to your point. The way I see that is the, we're assessing those who are in arrears and you're getting a portion of that interest as well, the twenty-four percent. It was coming back across the, I don't know what, what that amount would be if we would do it, but. That question, because it is one of, I see, I think everybody sees merit to it. We're not answering it. I gave you my opinion. We're not answering it in the form of, that's a hard no because Dave said so. We're coming back and discussing it, you know, in a board meeting and we'll have a vote on it.
Yeah.
Because to, to me, you just made a motion to pay the owner's interest on their assessments. That may be a rational thing, right? My first blush was to think, no, we'll, we'll consider it. If you have more input on that, please email me or call me. And we certainly consider that as an option.
Uh, again, we've answered the, that, what, the questions about, uh, size of bedrooms and who gets what. Again, that's just gonna go back to the, to our, the contract. Your attorneys will talk to us about that. We've talked about how do we update our contact information? Uh, tons of reverb, David is muted, audio feedback, turn off the volume. David needs to mute, acting the microphone is still echoing. David needs to mute himself much better. Uh, why can't we sell the Big Dig to save the resort? We answered that.
We can.
Yeah, we tried to do that. Um. Uh, we, we talked about who can produce, uh, provide our current balances due or overpaid. We're working on that. We're reaching out that information as well, boy, you can get contact information.
Right. Um, again, you're going to see. Can't stress this enough, how important it is to have you update your contact information. So that we can share forms, so we can keep you current on everything that we're doing without having to rely on a form like Facebook. Um. There's nothing, to be honest with you, that's another thing that says right in our contract for a management company that they were named to pay and. Uh, an ownership database and keep, keep that information for us. And someone that's so dated you, there's nothing there.
Tucker, I gotta read this one for you as a former Realtor. I love title people. Thank you so much. Still grateful you are here. And you got three applause and one heart.
Oh, that makes me feel good. Thank you.
From somebody that's known Tucker for much of his life, I can give you some dirt on him.
Yeah, that's true. There's a lot.
Okay, um, when, when you get some, the balances from Capital Vacation, I assume you will get some notice. So we know where we stand. Absolutely.
Right. We, we kind of foresee that every owner needs to review that, make, and on your own, make sure it's correct. We'll send you what we have. And have you, and then if there's a dispute on anything, then we'll work to resolve that.
And I think Tucker started reading some of these because we're at different spots. Uh, but, uh, you have espouses to cease, what do we do? Uh, blended solutions about selling the, the, um, property. Uh, we talked about the selling costs, uh, what those might be. Uh, we talked about, uh, who you can reach out to and we had the QR code for the scan. Um. Uh.
Well, also.
Do we continue to pay the assessment until we are done? Um, we will have the assessments right now, so there's nothing to pay unless you are on a payment plan. Long as you're current.
Right. That's correct. Uh, and we hope that we are able to vote any further assessment.
Here's a new question, something we haven't talked about. Um, what is the current debt of the resort?
Zero. We don't owe anybody any money other than, like I said, the, uh, I've just received the bill. We've been talking about as a board. I'm trying to negotiate with them. For thirty-eight thousand dollars from CenturyLink for canceling our long-term internet contract. For all of the units, you know, for our fiber system that was putting up this. And we're trying to negotiate that and not pay it because it's substantial and doesn't seem reasonable to pay the full contract. For three more years when we can't do it. Unfortunately, they're seem intractable, but, uh, I'm. Uh, I think Grant would describe, describe me as, I have some tenacity and I'll keep fighting for that and see what we can do. I wouldn't also tell you that we have negotiated and negotiated and negotiated with different companies where. We have contracts and different things and many of those companies have been very good with us with reducing us from debt to, to. Rise broadband, company we've been dealing with for a long period of time. Legitimately, we owed, owed them money and, and. Um, for, to continue their, continue their services to us. And we told them what had happened and sat down and told them, hey, we're trying to avoid a bankruptcy and avoid, um, complete failure. We've been a good customer. What can you do for us? They came back and said, we have cleared your debt. We think you're acting in good faith and we appreciate that you've communicated with us rather than just not paying your bill. They cleared it off for us. So. We've been successful. We'll keep work on that. But aside from the monthly bills for shower water sewer. Various expenses that come up like a five thousand dollar pipe break or plumbers, those kinds of things. Our monthly expenses, we are the only thing that we are spending. That, that's it. Whatever it costs us to keep the doors open, keep the fire marshal happy. Do any emergent repairs that are really required by law. Meaning you can't not fix your fire sprinkler system when you have a break in it. Um, we, we have, we have the obligation to maintain the property in a safe. Uh, manner, meaning that an ambulance or a fire truck can get there in case someone is on our property and gets injured. That's kind of where the limitation of our rules. Uh, one of those things again, those, we're not hiring employees to try to do work. We're asking Kathy Coco to. Bring all the owners together to try and work on maintaining a database of the owners and getting the appropriate forms out and communications with the owners. As part of, as part of the board and then working to get all these documents completed without having to pay, um. To pay someone a wage right now today to, to get it done. We'll work to do that as owners, take care of ourselves. And we don't want to end up like the other associations we talked to where they hired, um. Hired an online company. At the end of the day, the online company is only where they got any money. That's why, that's why we didn't do it. When I talk about Kathy Coco and if you want to volunteer, that's gonna be very helpful for us. And it's not like we're asking anybody to work full time. What we are asking is.
Anybody else to work full time?
Yeah. Tucker, Tucker and I are about, we're talking about this. We, we've each got about four hundred hours into it when we went back and looked at it. Since, since we decided to make the decision to shut down, so we've, we've been a little busy, but. Owners can help us control these costs and can volunteer with that group. We, we know we have amazing owners. I've spoken to so many people. It's, um, some of them were angry. We start to talk and at the end of our phone calls with. Ninety-nine point nine percent of them, they realize we're trying to do the best we can as a board and we. Have made, I've made some great friends and had some great interactions with the, with the, the owners. Um, this has really brought a lot of us together. We're hoping we can stay united and stay working together to. Complete this process as quickly and as cheaply as possible, like you to work as a team.
There was a question about why the board didn't get us with, uh, Big D in the first place. That was before a hard time.
No, I was here for that.
Oh, you're here for that?
Grant was here for that.
Okay.
Grant can speak to that. The property out to the north was actually the Big Dig was a right to construct. Was sold to someone early on in the condo plating processes. Meaning we owned the ground, but someone else owned the right to construct on. In two thousand and seven. You were contacted, I wasn't on the board then, but I was on Kathy Coco's position on the advisory board. And in two thousand and seven, we were contacted by the person with the corporate ownership of that right to construct and notified that they wanted to construct. To do so, they had to comply with our rules and regulations and what was in our, in our sales agreement for that right to construct. We worked out a deal where they would build our roads and update the fronts of our building to match their new construction as part of the pro, process. To do that, we had to replat the ground to, to, and sign off on a plat. And there was an error made by, at that time with the plat. There were some complications that came, but essentially as the construction began, Big D construction was contracted. And they put, I want to say about a million dollars of work in and didn't get paid. When they didn't get paid, they stopped working. Um, and this group that was building this had also borrowed, I want to say thirteen point nine. Million dollars in one loan and six million in another from a company called Harbor Real Asset Fund. I'm.
H R A F.
I may be butchering that name, but I believe that was the name of the company. That company, um, was defrauded of their millions of dollars. We've been told that a couple of people went to jail over that fraud. We never got anything for the money we invested in that was supposed to be paid back, meaning. Approximately a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees to go through all those processes and plating and all those things. Um, that was to be paid by them. That wasn't. We, the fronts of our building, the roads that were, the roads that were constructed later on our dollars. That they had committed to, uh, in order for us to allow them to do what they were doing to, um, we never got any of that money. When that property then went into bankruptcy, we spent significant funds to separate that piece of ground out of the. Uh, out of their. Bankruptcy proceeding. And the federal court pulled that piece of ground out of the bankruptcy proceeding and wouldn't let it be sold there. Eventually, there was still contest over that property and went to tax sale. And there were people there, um, trying to buy it. And we bid on it, knowing that we had already been offered at that, um, four million dollars for it by a potential investor. Big D was there and worked with us and, um, I, I always phrase this, I think Big D just. um, I, I always phrase this, I think Big D just, and Rob Moore had a soft heart for all the owners, when we told him we'd been defrauded by these guys and it's just a bunch of homeowners who got defrauded. And we sat down and he agreed to work with us to make us both hold by trying to keep the property, buy it at the tax sale. I want to say we paid three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the tax sale. And uh, then we had paid taxes and water fees on it while we tried to fight out the legal issues to get it to complete the sale and the legal complications of people wanting. It's been on the market for a couple of years and we thought we had it sold when COVID occurred. And that would have paid and there would have been no special assessment. We would have had enough money to do the upgrades and that was what we were trying to complete was the sale of that piece of land. And when COVID occurred, we had a potential buyer in in play and thought that there was a high likelihood that would sell. That would have done our refurbishments and we would have never probably been in this position anyway. But that's how we ended up in partnership with Big D on that property, is both of us got ripped off and Rob Moore was good enough, obviously, he has much deeper pockets as a owning a very large business. And I think he, out of the kindness of his heart, he partnered with us and was willing to put up with this in the process to to get to a resolution and sell it and try to make everybody, take care of everybody. And that guy is uh he's a, he's a great guy to to work with. He's very, very blunt to the point about business, business things, but I think his motivation here was he lives in the Arden Valley and knows a lot of the owners and felt that he'd try to help us, so. Best description I can do.
Next question I got here, so is is the property for sale now, what's the price?
We're not disclosing the price, we have some advice from our market analysis that will probably ultimately allow us to put it on the market without disclosing the price and just take offers. And see where, see where the price goes. We have some ideas on what we want, but obviously to make those public, negate any potential um if anybody knew what number we're trying to get to or what we think it's worth, that would be the limitations on any builds. So on the advice of the professionals right now, we're keeping that number to ourselves and letting it go on. You uh, bidding process to make make an offer type process. Apparently that is a normal method of sale of this type of resort, that's kind of how it's done nationally. Um. Or at least one of the methods that's used nationally um for investor groups to come in and look at it, they come in and look at what their ROI will be, their their return on investment will be and they make an offer gives them.
All right, and here's again, something that the board's never considered, but I'm sure we could talk about it. If we had a reservation during the time you cease, will that maintenance fee be considered for reimbursement?
At this point, that's probably, you know, we'll have to look at it, meaning for those you know, we've already, we've already had to pay out. And we negotiated it down from twenty five thousand or twelve thousand five hundred for a lot of the weeks that were scheduled with R C I points, different things. And we just don't have money for this, this is again, something I'll put on our list and something we need to come back and revisit and get you an answer on. Then the easy, easy answer is to say no right off the bat because we don't have money to do it in our hands today. But at the end of the potential sale of the resort and looking at what you have scheduled, I think it's fair to consider it.
And then here's, here's a word of caution from someone saying, please make sure that if you haven't, that if you haven't rented your unit out uh, or if you have rented your unit out and not uh notified the renter, make sure you do because she says uh, she still sees units online advertised and I've had two people show up to the mountain for this day and find out it's closed.
And that believe, I'm not certain, I've spoken, I've spoken to a few owners who or a few people that can learned it just before they left and had plans um, to come to a resort and learned that it was closed and looked at the website, but just to get some additional information for the trip. I think Jamie had someone show up for her and hopefully it was not reservations, at least on, at least on a couple of them, the reservations weren't made through the resort. They were sublet, meaning one of our owners advertised it, rented it to someone, was paid for it, but then the resort's closed. And so yeah, we've got to look at all of those things and try to make things right.
Uh, someone said they don't have a Google account, is there a form I can just email?
Yeah, I put in the chat uh the email address um for the, for the resort. I'll put that in the chat again here separately.
Um, again, talking about how do I check my deeds? And oh, Tucker's answering that one, so. Um, you're welcome, zero debt, well done, thank you, you're welcome. Why wouldn't someone who purchased it from day one versus someone who bought five years ago, why wouldn't it have collective equity? Mainly because over forty years of owning it.
That, that one just really doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, and I think again, it goes back to all the original documentation of how this goes.
Really, the weeks are worth market value, look until we have to post, right, whatever you can sell it for is what it's worth, there's no equity of what it's worth, as we have refurbished the resort, I would have expected the value of, you know, weeks to go up.
Um, how do we, so are we going? So. Uh, someone put in here, I feel the board.
Ultimately, ultimately, someone's asking if the board's going to get paid for all everything we're doing. Ultimately, at the end of this, both Tucker and I are tracking hours and Tucker has some work commitments that he's done, he's and will probably ask to get paid at the end of the sale. I know the board has offered, offered that and voted to do that for, to make sure that uh we're not getting beat up, they they realize how many hours we're putting in, but for me personally, it'll be a matter of when the sale is complete and we have money in hand, that's probably, that's when we'll do something.
Um, I have seen and heard many options presented, why do current owners wish to continue with an open resort, not get the option to buy relinquished lease and an assessment to keep the resort open?
We're not selling weeks at this, at this point or at any point there, the weeks that you were available to you was to be able to purchase them on one, on, you know, on the open market, but when you're asking why we weren't selling weeks? Even if with those weeks sold and the number of weeks that we had available to sale, you have to think back to where we were at that point when these decisions had to be made. You had a thousand and oh, is it number a thousand and twenty-six that were encumbered weeks that weren't available for sale? You had V R I, which we had a contract with that we're in dispute on for three hundred and twenty-five weeks. And the rest of the weeks were in rears and not foreclosed upon. So every week that we actually owned I was in a commitment by a contract that we had signed to capital vacations. Plus some that we still had to foreclose on to be able to provide those to them all the time. We had nothing that we could legitimately sell.
And the, and the reason for that is capital vacations had made the commitment to continue to pay assessments and fees and help fund our refer, the refurbishment of the resort. Uh, we weren't just giving them weeks to give weeks, um, it was so that we could continue the resort as as regular owners.
Yeah, and so essentially, again, what I'm saying, we didn't have anything we could legally sell you, I've signed a document with the board, the board saying going to plan to give these weeks to you and we're in a contract dispute. The weeks, even those weeks, we still had to foreclose on a significant number of those, I believe, around a hundred and twenty-five, we would have had to foreclose them to provide them to capital vacations as part of that agreement. Um, planning to use the money from the incoming fees and dues on those weeks to fund those for closures. But then the other weeks, the remaining weeks that were owners in a rear would mean for on having foreclosed on all of those to be able to guide any weeks. So when you're in that situation, we didn't believe there was anything we could sell, any we directed everybody to the web, buy anybody you want there. But do it with the caveat of being honest with the people you're buying from and telling them in the venture sale of the resort, there is going to be some money there. Don't, I couldn't. I mean, people tried to do either weeks for zero again and again and again, day in, day out, in those first couple of months. Um. Yeah, I had owners call me and say that someone sold them the week night and told them that everyone was paid and didn't disclose to them that they had the special assessment, there were some there were some different things going on, but that's why we weren't, weren't able to provide them weeks for sale. Until we cleared the contract dispute, there was no, there was no weeks we could sell.
How do we get right of first refuse, uh, the right of first refusal as a group of owners and if so, what would it take to be a viable group?
Right, refusal, you don't get. We've had several people ask us for that and we've decided we can't give that out. Um, we don't think it's appropriate to all the other owners. Um, meaning how do you tell that if there's somebody that has the right of refusal to root for investors that are making deals? So we decided we're not going to go down that path and we are going to give it, believe me, we considered just going to ask them. Um, and talk to the professionals about it. We're going to get down the path of any group that you bring together can make a bid just like everyone else. And whatever that number falls out, that's the highest bidder will be where the sale will be. And there's no discussion that that is closed, that's what we already do. If you have a strong argument for that, you want to bring to us, we're listening, we we're directed by you. But that's where we've come out, that's already been discussed at length, but there may be some point on that that we didn't get, please reach out.
Uh, it seems to me that Powder Mountain people would want to purchase this property, are there any negotiations with them?
The only thing I could tell you is that we reached out to them. And they're aware of what's going on, what we're doing.
Can we sell our unit if we happen upon a buyer?
I, I don't think there's anything that would prevent you legally or ethically or anything else from selling your unit if you want to. The only thing I would encourage you to do is to be be forthright about all the caveats and things that are going on with the resort and you sort of. It's, it's heartbreaking to hear when I get a call from someone that says got this unit and like, I paid the guy and I, and we paid substantial amounts of money for him for a ski week not knowing that the resort or hit for him in fact that he was shutting that they weren't going to use that way, that hit for him from the fact that he was behind on a special assessment.
Yeah, I had my twenty twenty-four reservation in the fall after the closure, will I get a credit for that?
That's one of the questions we have, we'll have to explore, initially we said no. Uh, meaning that the dues we'll do in October are going for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five dues. And so we had, if you're, if you're week would have been, I think the argument we looked at initially was that the week would have been August, September, we potentially looked at it, then after that, when we reassess again. After the reassessment period, we didn't see anything.
How do I catch up on fees?
That's again, you can pay your special assessment to us, we'll provide that information shortly to you on how to do that. And you can provide your dues to us as an association when you come current. Again, the fact of the matter is that by doing so today, you won't be able to getting a refund of your special assessment payment when we sell the resort. You'll be using that money to fund the collection costs while you're trying to get special assessments.
And, and, and to be clear on that, we're not asking for this full twenty eight hundred, right?
But the only, the only special assessment that will bring you current is a minimum of seven hundred dollars. That's it, that's what takes me to current. Um.
Um, let's see, where am I at now? How many of the seven?
That's not correct either, it's twenty eight hundred.
Twenty eight hundred.
Twenty eight hundred, yeah, you're right.
Sorry, the way it was written, the way it stands legally, the only way to become current on special assessment is to pull a twenty nine hundred.
Yeah, I stand for my statement.
But I apologize for any confusion.
That's what happens when I talk, I'm sorry.
It was one of the determinations that we had made early on how billing would go for that.
Okay, um, how many of the seven hundred owners are winter weeks and how many non-winter weeks? Yeah, we're not really keeping track of that.
We, we looked at that once before, Kathy Coco might have that, she's in here, but I want to say it was about four hundred winter weeks and three hundred.
Something like that.
And as Adam said, it doesn't matter, all weeks are equally close.
Right, it is an interesting, interesting question, but it is an equal number of was fairly close to an equal number of owners being represented. And again, the, the interesting part of that is that um our duty, our fiduciary duty is to every owner, even if you're in the works, as a board. And we take that seriously, that's not an interpretation we take lightly, it is how it's interpreted in Utah Code. Just because you're in a rear, it doesn't mean that we can look past you or try to um hail, not, not look out for your financial interests in the same manner that we do the financial, financial interests of every owner. Hence the saying that to be to come into fully being current or fully, fully invested in the sale, all those, all those dues have to be paid back.
Uh, for those of us that had to pay special assessments back in the day for overruns on construction costs for the pool or community center, will we get that money back at the time of the sale?
No, those are all things that you have years of use of all those things, the same as I did. It's interesting because I was so mad at that special assessment for the overrun on the, on the uh, community center, that's why I started becoming active with the board, I was so tired of those special assessments. And angry about it and I started going to board meetings. Yeah, as in Kathy Coco's position, it was eventually put on board.
Uh, well, I suggest we adjust the legal language.
Well, just the illegal language to what? What are you speaking about now?
And then.
That was Scott.
Scott.
Yeah, elaborate on that, we'll try and answer you.
And then Barbara says, thanks for your incredible patience, you've now answered the same questions over and over again.
There, there's a new question here in the chat that I'll address, it says, is there another parcel of land? Not the big dig that lies within the boundaries of P R V that we do not own, what is the status of that? So there are actually two parcels of land within, within our within the resort, uh, the owners association owns both of those pieces of land and they'll be included with the sale. So there's one in the very middle, if you, if you know, just um uh, what, shoot, what are the ones up above called, just
Snowdrift.
Snowdrift, yeah.
Between Snowdrift and the community center?
Yeah.
There's a square there that's where we dump all of our snow, if you remember.
Playground area.
Yeah, between the playground area.
That, that parcel is owned by the, the association that was paid for a few years ago. And also the parking lot where the dumpster is, is a separate parcel, that not part of the subdivision plat or the condo plat that is also owned by this, the association, so.
Goes all the way down.
Yeah, we, we own all those lands, all that land, it's contiguous.
But, but to be clear, we always assumed we owned the playground area. And then we had to, it was termed that we didn't own it. And we had to get it back.
Yeah, our, our, our neighbor bought that um from the Harbor Real Asset bankruptcy and then sold it to us.
So, yeah, good question. I think we've gone through questions, uh, I think we're going to wrap this up, it's been a lot longer, apologize, we got started late. Um, we'll try and make a recording of this available um on our Facebook page and and hopefully on our webpage as all, as well, I, I believe it is being recorded. Um, if you have further questions, just uh let us know through the Facebook page, we'll also try and get ahold of you through the emails that you've been sending, uh, as far as contact information is, is there. If you have questions about deeds or transferring titles or what happened, my dad or my, my mom or dad have passed away. Um, send us a message for that as well and um, and I'll work on that with you.
And then the two issues that were brought up about, I had time scheduled and cannot get recompensated for that. And there was another issue that we've got written down, but we'll we'll come back and and look at as a board, but we'd encourage you, email us, call me. Tell us what your concerns are so we can you know, we're, we're just a bunch of people trying to
Trying to do our best.
Trying to do our best here and we certainly want to listen to you. There's no bad question, there's no bad phone call to have us consider something or reconsider something. Um, please, please reach out to us anytime. And thank you for sticking with us as we go through this and for your patience. The communication, I, I, I'm on the Facebook groups and I see those every comment, some of them were a little painful to read when you're wondering why we can't answer. But I wanted to just address that particular question for a moment. I couldn't answer you because the answer to the question, I would go to post and answer and that answer will change four days later. And five days after that, there would be another change from V R I or Marop. And as we pursued and went into the legal side, the attorney just said, do not, do not respond, do not commit to anything, do not share that information that's influencing or telegraphing what we're doing as a board to these people we were in dispute with. Um, that is a tough place to be when we want to tell you things and we're being told we can't. And I certainly didn't want to post something as an answer to any of the questions and answer them and none of the board did, when, when I say I, speaking for myself. We talked, we, we had multiple board meetings trying to say executive session, board meetings to deal with legal issues, we're trying to find something we could share. Janie, all of us, Kathy, trying to figure out what we could tell you, ultimately, like I say, it was so dynamic in those first months. Anything I said would have been construed as a lie two weeks later. Anything the board said would have been construed. Anything the board said would have been construed as a lie because we're saying something and then your perception is that that's not real because it changed. We were a little cautious about that. We really appreciate the patience that it takes to have have the confidence of board. There were a lot of comments on there. On those on those forums. Uh thanking the board, different things. Uh we really have tried to do what we think is the very best to consider every option. We've. We we come to conclusions and taking the actions we have with those with those items in mind, but we do appreciate all of you. And we we think at this point, because one of our legal issues is completed and we're working on the other, we hope to be more. Um collaborative and more responsive on the on the forums as well as get a cadence of moving slowly and hopefully that will. Help to relieve the stresses that you've experienced for not knowing what's going on through a week. While we were trying to clear things that we think ultimately probably netted you as a group millions of dollars at the end of the day. I think that's everything we have. Grant Hodgson, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing else.
David, no. Tucker?
I think we're, I think we're good.
Janie, I don't know, she might be on mute. And again, we'll have to please reach out to us with any questions. There's no wrong question, nothing the board won't consider and and chat with you about. And again, thanks for your time tonight. I'm going to be there. The meeting will be posted for people who will go back and listen to us. While they're on here and we were disorganized tonight because of the technical issues we have. And it'll be posted on the website and on our Facebook pages.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.